Community and Economic Development. As soon as she gives us the go ahead Cheryl. Okay Cheryl.
All right, 5:30 I will bring the Community and Economic Development Committee. The first discussion item is a presentation with NOPEC. We have Brenda and Jeff here to present to us.
Thank you.
Very much. Wonderful to be here, wonderful to be here in person. People enjoy it, much better than having everybody on their screens and popping in and out and all the wall that goes on. So this is great, it's great seeing everybody and it's great to be here. So as far as the presentation, yeah, we'll talk about NOPEC. What I would like to do, I can talk about NOPEC and my work for years. Or we can actually talk about some of your issues, some of the things you would like to see in your aggregation program. Why are you considering NOPEC? And how we can help you as a community? Because bottom line, I think for profit organization, it is not a supplier. It is a council of governments that is comprised of over 225 communities just like the city of Nevada. We're in 19 counties. We went down to Springfield, near the Dayton area, and Orlando. So we're expanding, even though it says Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, we're really the Ohio Public Energy. We're starting all over, so we don't really like to do that. We serve communities, that's why we are in this. We are in business to provide you the best aggregation program that we can provide you, both gas and electric. I know what you're talking about gas today. But we do a lot more for communities than just your gas electric program. If it was just getting a price from a supplier, you currently have a consultant that does that for you. And the difference is NOPEC brings a lot of other member benefits to the program that you don't get when you just put it out on the street and you bid and you have a fixed term for whatever period of time. So we are there to provide you with the resources for your community to be successful. This is your Economic Development Committee. One of the things that NOPEC does for economic development for your community is provide funding. What it does is it provides seed money for, let's say that you have a first step program, just a little smaller. Let's say you have a piece of rice and they need to put in a new letter. Even though such a project would provide no payback in, let's say, three to five years because of the energy savings it would provide. They don't have the power to do that for you staff. There's a very low interest rate and it's awful, it's not on their balance sheet. So it's not impacting their other parts of their business. So it's really a great opportunity for them to get what they're looking for, windows, lighting, all of those types of installation, all of those types of things that come with energy efficiency and provide instant payback. Cheapest kilowatt hour of electric that you use or is the one you don't use. So if we can teach our customers how to use less, they're going to save over the bulk of educating customers, helping you to help local businesses. If you have local businesses who are looking for energy efficiency type funds, it is a wonderful way that helps them to do projects that need more money to their bottom line. And it can help them sustain or maybe it's another person that they admire, those types of things. So that's where this is at. We also provide what's called Preferred Pricing Program. So if you're in that NOPEC, whether it just be for gas or gas electric, it doesn't matter. You get the opportunity to have Preferred Pricing. Now you probably go out to bid for your facilities, whatever you do it. You probably go out to bid for those facilities. Most of our communities did the very same thing. And they came to NOPEC and they said, hey, you know, we're a member, but our, our community and help us with our bills. Because what happens is typically your facilities are higher than thresholds you're not in the aggregation program. So you're kind of excluded from that because of the premium of Preferred Pricing. And what this is, next to her who is the supplier of NOPEC, provides pricing to you for all of your facilities, whatever facilities you want to have priced at no margin. So that means, what that means is that basically you're going to get the cheapest price you can on the market. Because everyone else obviously is saving for profit. So they're putting their margin on thousands and thousands of dollars over, over the couple of years it's been provided. And it really is a great member benefit for you, the community. And ultimately, even though maybe about half of your customers might be in the aggregation program, half is either not eligible or they're on their own, they've shopped on their own. If you folks are saving money through the Preferred Pricing Program, that's their tax dollars that aren't being spent. So it really does go to the Providing Program. We also provide grants to your community, both in the electric and the gas program. And I'm gonna let Jeff talk about that because he does a lot with grants.
What am I, meter, so I can make this quick? Basically, I'm Jeff Heinrich, I'm the Relationship Manager of Orange County. I work all the time with Mickey Marazzi, Kathy Wilson, and Melanie Baker Kent today. About 36 months of fixed contract for Kent, so it's gonna be pretty nice. But with the grant money, the best part about buying your building, and that could be a lot of different things, new windows, new H and X system. We've seen lighting for, you know, the LED signs out front. You'd be surprised how nowadays all that falls on. We've had communities say, hey, this is kind of random, but we did a new fridge. Our fridge is over 30 years old and is breaking down. And we use our grant money if it's energy efficient to get a new fridge, and they did. My favorite is Roots Town, the Christmas lighting is a pretty proud community thing. And they're LED lights. So it's a great program that so many people take advantage of because when I worked, I don't know if anyone heard me before, I used to work in the state of Ohio. And when I would go to different communities, they'd say, hey, you got any money for me? And I would always give them a joke. And I'd say, no. Now I can actually say, actually, we do, we do have money for you. And that's just the grant, but the sponsorship money as well. And we tell everyone to, you're the ones that are signing up for NOPEC. We don't give you credit, but you use the money, secure the money. It's very easy to do. Jim DePaula, I talk to a few times a year with Ravenna Township Enforcement. But he's their go-to person for the grant. And I tell everyone, reach out to your neighbors, reach out to Jim DePaula, Ravenna Township. Reach out to Melanie Baker and ask them, hey, how's it bad working with NOPEC? And I guarantee you that they're gonna have positive things to say because it's the options that we give. You know, in my capacity as a relationship manager, I'm not coming to Ravenna, hey, great, you signed up for our gas stealing contracts. We're gonna be here, we're not gonna bother you, we're not gonna be more than any of us. So you'll be seeing a little more of me, should you guys sign up. If you guys choose.
I have a question on the grants. If you guys are a participant with NOPEC in that community, so like Roots Town, Kent, the ones that you've made, is every city entitled to a certain amount of money? Or are these grants that everybody?
Every amount is different.
So what the amount goes on, is it by the size of people in the community, enrollment? And what type of baseline does the grant start?
I can't get that number for.
I'm just curious, I mean, I'm not asking for like, you know, the exact number. I was just curious, when you're saying grants, is it like $500? Is it a couple?
For larger cities, yeah, it's a few thousand. You know, we have some townships that escrow their grants, so they say, we don't have anything to do this year. They'll escrow it, roll it over a year, maybe even two is most they can do. Then they've got a pretty large chunky change. But they found a way to roll over their grants every year. I forget what they used it for, I believe it was windows, I wanted to say. It's always a popular one.
So for grants, it would be used for energy?
Anything non-political or non-religious affiliated?
Okay.
Now that doesn't mean like if a church works through a, what's the word, like soup kitchen or whatever an outreach that anyone can use, that's different.
Like something like that, you could use sponsorship on one of their activities?
Yes. Sure.
The other question I have is what about, why about we talked about the fuel stations, the grants that you provide? Would that help cover something like that?
We're actually looking into an actual program just for you right now. As it turns out, I'm actually the one getting.
More, and I've actually had several people that work at our courthouse. Ask me, when is Ravenna gonna do this? And I know way back when I brought it up, like a couple of terms ago, when they just started coming out and, you know, but now, we really didn't discuss it a whole lot back then. I saw Garrettsville, you know, has that. And, you know, we have a courthouse, we have a lot of people that come into our community that are using these types of vehicles. So I have people that are coming into our community, you know, they have been looking at this more and more.
That's interesting, you know, I've found in my research with, not just to focus on that solely, but just to touch on that. A lot of more rural communities are allowed to be able, whatever, for 30 minutes, you gotta go to diner, you know. Yeah. Go put money in our community while you're doing that, or enjoy the community. So, yeah, it's definitely something that, not just we're looking into. I was just on a conference call last week with, with the, anyway, they're based out of Iowa. We had a, you know, hour and a half conference call with them, you know, what have we got to do? And we're all rolling on this and NOPEC, very much.
The topic has come up with many cities. And that's the unique thing about NOPEC. We have a sponsorship program because communities, communities run NOPEC. So Mickey Marazzi is on board of NOPEC, the county has represented it. Every community has a representative, is designated, and is invited to the General Assembly in a conference. And we get together and we go through just questions. And everybody votes on it, I mean, it's like a public meeting, just like you guys have such sunshine laws and all of that. So when the communities have an issue, they say, hey, we want to do some sponsorship. Because we get asked all the time, whatever, whatever kind of programs. Communities come to NOPEC and say, can you do this? NOPEC looks into it and says, yep, let's put together a program. Number of years ago, a bunch of communities said, hey, can you help us with our cell phone contracts? We wanted to look into that and it was like a birdie cast. Because everybody has their different policies with cell phones, you have to have your own cell phone, you have to have a city-issued one, different carriers. It was just a morass, there was just no ratings for everybody. No one wanted to go on the same plan. So that kind of fell apart. But that's, that's where NOPEC is really a strength. Is having you bring to the organization ideas that comes from. That's where the sponsorship has come from. That's where we've got a brand new, all green product, 100% green product, because that's starting to become much more popular. So with the next anniversary of the electric opt-out, there's going to be a trial community. Now, we understand it's gonna cost a little more, but we want to support this. We want this to be a part of something we can say we're supporting in our community. So that's the neat thing under NOPEC, is there's a bunch of opportunities for your residents. I'll do public hearings, I'll do lots of different things. People will bring their electric and gas bills and we'll take a look at them together. And I would suggest that as a homework assignment, you all go home, you look at your electrical mail, and it says, hey, you can get gas for 2.2 cents per MCF. And we'll give you a $200 gift card, sign up now. And you sign up, you go, hey, this is great, but you forget to put in your phone month to month. And you get busy and you don't call back. I've had people pay four times what they should be paying. And they look at the bill and they go, how did I, why did I pay instead of MCF? Because you get it all, I mean, a month to month, and you redo it without really understanding that that was what was going to happen. Happens to people all the time.
And that's for our Do Not Knock Program, which is what we got from the community. Say, typically our early doors soliciting, don't worry, sign here, we're gonna take care of it. You're paying too much, just sign here, we're gonna, we're gonna save you a ton of money. What happens is they sign on the dotted line, and then they decide, maybe, you know, a sign, grant, or whatever, hold on, the cancellation fee is $100, and they gotta pay the money back that they promised to stay on the contract for. Take advantage of people in the community. So the Do Not Knock Program, if your community signs up for it, you keep the database, you send it to us. Companies, you cannot solicit door to door to take advantage of these citizens. It's happened many, many times and thanks to the Do Not Knock Program, it's really.
We got that happen here a few years ago where it just seemed like some of these, I don't know what you call them, but electric companies that are gonna save money and they're just terrified after they do it, they call you and they say, what did I just sign? I shouldn't have done this, so.
They're scared tax, a lot of them are scared of taxes. Right, well, they're signing it. They don't read the asterisks.
Or you don't, you won't have electricity, you have to select a supplier. You don't select a supplier, you won't have the gas or electric. You know, whatever kind of medical need it might be, well, they're gonna sign because they think their electric is being turned off. And it's absolutely, that's our practices. We hear about it all the time, we get phone calls from customers. When we get calls from customers at our call center, which is in, which is in Wisconsin, by the way, some of these stuff like us. When we get calls, we are able to talk with them about what happens to do. There are some people that want a fixed price, period. That's all they want to sign up for, they just wanna know what it's going to be. So we offer a fixed price program. There are some who say, I wanna stay no matter what. Well, we offer a guaranteed benefit for that. Then there's a variable, which is our program rate. So we have a lot of different rates, but the nice thing is there's never a cancellation fee on any of those. They can move between products at any point. So we're not here to take advantage of the customers, we're here to educate them. And if we educate them and they decide, hey, I wanna go out and I wanna find a good supplier, that's fine too. That's why there's no cancellation fee. It's really just kind of, this is a NOPEC rate. This isn't going to be a $200 cancellation fee or sky is the limit of what they can show. You have to be in the show, you know, early in the market.
Once they ask you for electric, oh boy, here we go. Press wanted, hi, thanks for calling NOPEC, I've been helping you. For a few seconds, I forgot, oh yeah.
Yeah, it's 24/7 as well. So it's really.
Something to say that I don't speak any of. Really quick too, I just wanted to bring up, you know, a number of different townships in Florida, but Garrettsville, Fireham, and some states that are comparable. All of them, by any means, ask them how the experience has been. The other thing, just wanted to bring up, last year, we were going through, when Kent was looking at the Preferred Price, we did calculations on the new contracts, what we ended up saving them. It's gonna be north of $47,000. Because just signing up for a 36-month fixed rate on their, we send it over the contracts, we handle it, we send it back to you, nothing goes through until you okay it. Once you do, it's done, it's that easy. And that's one thing that I really wanna stress tonight too, is the ease of which you can call them. If you want to sign up for the Preferred Pricing Contract, you can do that. The grants, the sponsorships. We're the one in Smith Township, Prepper Retreat. That's a big one that communities like to do. It's just, thank you so much for your sponsorship program. Prepper Retreat was a great success, we can do it again this year and sign up and you're good.
I just wanted to open it up to you folks. I mean, you've got gas aggregation program that you have on the edge of, of when that's, that's going to be needing to be decided. I don't know from your, from yourself, but I would expect it's probably wanting you to kind of lock it up fairly soon. What thoughts have you had?
How long have you been in Charlotteville?
Oh, how long? Since the county's signed with the House of Representatives.
Yeah. I was gonna say, over 20 years.
I'm just starting to see your name on the bill. But it's, but it's for small amounts of money.
Well, yes, I mean, when you have in your aggregation programs, it's not the full cost that you're able to shop for. It's only a portion of it. So for gas, you're just the metering for the storm restoration, for the transportation. What you're paying for is the actual gas. Same thing for electric perspective. You're still going to pay Ohio S and P for metering, buildings, storm restoration, all of that kind of stuff. What you're paying for, probably half of your bill. And that's why you're seeing smaller amounts than the total bill. You must, must work for that as well.
What's that?
We're in the city on the bills and shit.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So I could build a commercial rate.
That, I have so many people I've talked to about that, it's so painful.
So I'm surprised nobody told you, but we're already locked in to a rate.
Oh, okay.
And it's really bad.
Chuck knew that we locked in, but we wanted to hear the president. So you already have something to start to knock over?
Yes.
Okay.
For at least two years.
Two years, okay.
At like 3.75, something like that, I know, it hurts.
Really? Who's, who's the supplier that can ask, who's the supplier? There's a constellation.
Yes.
Sorry. I was gonna say, rate right now is 3.75 for standard rate. It's higher, the monthly variable is up because the SEO is up. And it varies, our program rate varies. It's 3.78 for two years. So it's, it's fine, it's much higher than your last rate. Unfortunately, it's kind of going that direction. But the nice thing about the way that NOPEC does it is it's a variable rate, meaning that it floats with the market. Just depends on what the forwarders do and all of that kind of thing. But it's a floating rate with the markets. You don't ever find yourself in a situation where you're locked in up here and the market goes like, you go down with the market. And we stay, you know, with the market. If the market starts going up and it looks like it's going to continue up like in the previous situation, where we're about 13, 14 access firms, yeah, we have the ability to make contracts. Sky high, you don't see it coming down. So we do have that capability, it's too bad. In order to join NOPEC, what has to happen is it has to be two public hearings on a plan of operation. Nobody ever comes to them, takes about two, three minutes to, so it takes two public hearings. And there's, you have to join the council government and you have to adopt the policy. So there's, there's some steps that have to take place for us to do that. So we're gonna walk you through all of that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying to you with the block rating.
Yeah, yeah. It's a council of governments and you just have to, you have to join it. There's no cost to the city to join, there's no cost to the city to leave. All that we ask is that you have to stay through whatever aggregation period you committed to. So a gas aggregation is two years, a gas is three years. So to join, you need to stay and make the contracts on behalf of your community to provide us supply.
How long does a community have to be in before there's a chance to take advantage of a grant or grants?
Yeah, the grant enrollment, average enrollment, so it's not higher lows, it's the average enrollment. So if you joined in 2021, it would be for 2022 grant. So it's just, it kind of lagged, but it's both gas and electric. So I don't know if you're getting a grant for your gas or not, but you do get grants for your gas and electric. And we have a really good month.
Swag. So as far as with the way that the gas aggregation is now, everyone's automatically in the role correct. With this, do I have to contact NOPEC to enroll?
No, it's not what I have programmed as well.
Okay.
We send the level of prices, here's what you get if you don't opt out. However, you do have other options on that list. If you want a fixed price for 12 months or 24 months. Or in the next go around, 100% green product, you can call in the role of that. So all of those are listed on the opt-out letter. But if you don't opt out, you get the program.
Okay.
So it's just exactly what it is. The question? Now and the next, you know, because if, if you want to do it before, what would that be? October of 2023? That in those two years, that's the current rate of 2023. Just because it takes about two months, you've got to. Just because it takes about two months, you've got to advertise for your public hearing, you've got to hold those. You've got to adopt the, um, legislation. So there's a talk in June of 2023. That would be on the table. I'm going to run that through those to March of 2024. I go to that too, so we can do that with the same app. Any other questions?
Sounds good. Thank you for the information.
Oh, you're welcome. I was excited to hear your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a rest of, good rest of your day.
All right, next is the designated outdoor refreshment areas. Mayor, do you want to speak on this?
Well, I've read, uh, it's Main Street and I think you all have it, uh, in your folder. Um, talking with Cheryl, I thought this is something that we should discuss. Uh, and look enhance the experiences here in Ravenna. Um, uh, as you read through that, there's a little bit of preparation. You have to decide how you want to define your, your community in terms of the limits that they can go to. What the designations, where are they physically going to be able to go? And then you have to decide when you're gonna lock. Uh, are you gonna do it when there's events, uh, or those sorts of things? Or I don't imagine we'd have it going all the time. Uh, let that, but we would have to, uh, go ahead and, and kind of pencil that. If there's an interest in having the door here. Um, I was surprised, there was a list there of the communities that have. Um, I think Kent has been quite successful. Uh, and it would have to be designed to fit our situation. Um, and I'm, without a doubt, I think it would help some of our, uh, local businesses. Uh, if, if this was used properly. Uh, but thi- this was brought in for discussion only tonight, we're not, there is an interest in this. Uh, we would go ahead and get with Mr. Peace and, uh, anybody else that's concerned and take a look at how we would want to see this done in the city of Ravenna. If there's an interest in doing it. I think the survey that they had, the bulk of the, uh, businesses in town, uh, and, and if you have some places in town that work with drug rehab and alcohol rehab, they're, they're not going to be fans of this. Um, but the economic development of the city, uh, some of the arguments that they make is that it's, it's, it's an opportunity to bring somebody to town and they can go out and walk around. Uh, you can't walk into other stores with it, but when you get town longer and he might go to another watering hole to pick up your Dora glass, uh, there. Uh, there is, uh, tell me if I'm wrong, but I had the feeling that Main Street was looking to manage this.
Yes.
So there would be a fee if somebody would want to have the cup. So they couldn't just walk around carrying like a red solo cup.
No, no.
And drink it that way from an establishment, they would actually have to have.
A specific Dora cup.
Right?
And that to the businesses for beautification of the businesses.
The city, the city, we would have to authorize the Dora. Main Street really has nothing to do with it other than education.
Right, I understand, but if they have to manage it.
No, they don't have, there's nothing to manage.
And what they're managing, the cups, they're purchasing Dora cups and they're going to take the money from the purchase of the cups and put it back into the businesses.
Right.
Well, I don't know that there's anything providing for purchase of cups. Would the law provide that? Well, I don't care what the proposals could, I mean, we barely have for. Um, would provide the cups and the cups are just to, to let people know when they're walking outside, this has been an authorized purchase. Um, that's really the extent of it. So I don't know whether there's any extra money going to, to Main Street.
I believe other communities that they're, Dan is.
Purchase beverage from the establishment and you tell them that you want a, a Dora. Right. They have to put on, you wear a wristband ring. And they give you the Dora cup with your drink in it for that area.
So the five hundred. Money we made, what was the Kent Council being taken to task for costing them $30,000?
What, what happened in Kent, this is interesting because in their proposal, by the way, this proposal is over a year old. They brought this to council once during one of our meetings in June of 2020 because we wanted to help some of the downtown businesses. What happened in Kent last week is ironically, because this was a battle between the Main Street Kent and the council. They're planning Oktoberfest, which brings in outside beer vendors. And Main Street Revanna has a constant thing, I don't know what their hours are in Kent. Because it would compete with the co- the companies bringing in the beer. And some of them threatened to pull out unless they suspended their door because people coming to the event could just go into the regular establishment and then go around. I mean, Main Street Revanna wants to push this forward as an economic development initiative. And like I said, it's over a year old. But beyond it being established, I don't see any role for Main Street Revanna beyond that, other than educating people.
Well, just as convenient to us with, um, it's after, it's the page after the map. How does the door work? Who is responsible for what? It says our goal is to run the program so it benefits the downtown notion of Ravenna as a destination downtown. Cups, MSR will order clear or colored and recyclable Dora cups. Feed train a branded logo and general rules of the program. Sinage, Main Street Ravenna will work during specific event days. In addition, Main Street Ravenna will provide three options of window decals for businesses in the Dora. It gives their examples. Trash, Dora cups will be recyclable and Main Street Ravenna will work, will work with the city during cardboard receptacles to place around town during events in addition to the regular trash cans. Uh, education, Main Street Ravenna will provide program information to all downtown businesses. The community and the website, Main Street Ravenna will create a dedicated webpage containing all the program information. And then it explains in the questions frequently on Main Street, purchasing the cups and the fees going to the businesses to provide.
With fees.
They're whatever they, whatever they charge for the cups, Main Street.
Well, who are they going to charge?
The people that buy the cups.
Well, why are we so far?
They don't realize it.
No, but what I'm saying is they're, I mean, if they're going to charge a fee to people, that's an extra cost.
Who will be managing the Dora? Main Street Ravenna could manage the materials associated with the Dora. This would include Dora cups with a gram.
Right.
I think you don't.
When you say manage, that's not, I mean, I think that's an inappropriate word. We set up the Dora through the city, that's the way the power revised code is written. And whether Main Street wants to, you know, purchase the cups, provide the cups to the, the, you know, uh.
But we allow it, we allow the alcohol on the streets and, and so forth. We would, we would be the ones still in that.
Yeah, we, yes.
No, but I'm saying, I think it would, it makes sense if somebody's going to manage it versus.
What does manage to mean? That's, I mean, restaurants or whoever are serving. Now, if those companies, those places are going to charge individuals just for the cup.
People will pay for that.
Well, well, maybe.
So the way it is first.
But I mean, there's nothing in still, no.
A lot of these doors.
I've been to the Kent, when you buy, I mean, you buy, they give it to you in the.
That's not all of them.
Well, but that's, I mean, I suppose you could set up, I just think it's an economic dis.
Well, I do agree with you on that. I'm just pointing by what was presented.
Well, that's fine. I mean, I understand that.
I'm here to explain.
Well, that's just a proposal, but I don't think the proposal is, um, well written.
I feel like it could be a benefit for a lot of the economic development in downtown, especially during events. I think in the nice part with the Dora is that as city council, we.
Sure.
You know, turn it off and on as we see fit.
We can suspend it, I agree with you there. I don't think it's a good idea for the events we have. For example, we just had Art on Main. We would not have the, the wine sampling as part of it because that's a completely separate permit. Just like what Kent, or Main Street Kent, the door gets in the way in a lot of, in a lot of instances.
We can evaluate those situations on a.
Right, but I'm just saying, I, I don't, the doors, I don't believe meant to necessarily, depending upon, it depends on the event, whether or not it's going to be helpful.
Where, would it be beneficial instead of really?
Well, so.
Oh, I did, but I understand it.
But the point of that beer garden was actually, it was, it was well intentioned, was to make money for Main Street Revanna. Main Street Revanna can't make money through this door. I mean, I, I don't know what they, they meant to make money by buying beer and selling it for profit.
That was actually the key on us that put it on. I was the fundraiser for the C.
Right, there's a history to that, but yes, that's true. Quanis in conjunction with Art on Main did it on, as an add-on.
Can I ask a question just how this works? So as far as the cost for the cups, are you saying that additional money for that cup? Or is the establishment paying money to purchase the cups ahead of time or?
None of that is necessary. There's nothing about costs for cups in the.
Yeah, that's only in Main Street.
Okay, I, I just was curious as to how, how this operates period. So if it's set up, it could be that I pay an extra dollar for my Dora cup, if the city has it set up that way.
I don't, no, there's nothing in the code that says that the city can charge a fee for that. It would be the bar.
Sure.
I think it would control the people, you know, the amount of people you're going to have drinking in the downtown and I also.
Yeah, but.
That is, but I'm just saying, if it's what is on this paper, I think it would help, um, raise money. It would help control, um, you know, the amount of people that are drinking in our downtown and.
Door was not meant to make money in the way that people like to.
Not like you're making money, but for an incentive of some sort.
No, the only incentive is to allow people to walk outside. Any incentive right now, I'm not opposed to a door at a certain period in time when we have a reason. But on average Friday or Saturday night, I don't see a cultural advantage in Ravenna to be walking around town with a beer in your hand.
No, and, and I don't think that, that's, we don't have the, to do it on a daily basis from noon to ten. No, that's not what our downtown is. But I do think that during balloon fair or any other events that might come up, that Main Street puts it and we can restrict it as we see fit.
But the balloon fair has beer and, you know, depending upon the event.
Downtown?
I think they do, used to.
Never.
I, I haven't, well, unless I had over.
I have never seen alcohol.
We've had beer trucks at Sunbow.
At Sunbow, but not.
In those few side streets.
That's fine and, you know, balloon fairs once a year. Art on Main, again, I would argue was, is not an event that the Dora would help, but probably hurt. And so I don't know that the number of events that we have would be enhanced by this. For example, we have, the, the idea would be, and, and it was for when cities had like the first Friday event. Ongoing things where they had people downtown to enjoy a number of things, music, art, whatever. They didn't necessarily close off streets and it enhanced the idea that people could go from one place to another.
It enhances the eventual.
Me, let's have that environment first. I, I'm all for that.
Let's, let's have some events scheduled so far down the road that will, I'm thinking, start to draw more people. And then when you add things, it could be an, an enhancement. And the other question I have, if I understood right, there'll be a separate container for the plastic cups. Is that right?
Main Street would provide cardboard recycling containers to collect the Dora cups.
Well, who will be?
Picking them up?
Yes.
Illegally responsible for it.
Well, see, this is what I'm getting at.
The code requires that we have two things attached to this when we submit our application. One of them is a sanitation plan. And I suppose it could include Main Street, but I wonder if that's a good idea. It's a responsibility for maintaining that sanitation plan and safety forces too. You know, how many policemen or safety forces are going to be around during the Dora time to assist in, in any kind of problem?
And if, and if that's the case, then there would be overtime paid to the, no, well, no, I'm.
They're already, I mean, they're gathering the trash, which just could be.
If it's an event, they're going to be out anyway.
Yeah, right.
The door does require that you have a sanitation plan, so Paul's not wrong.
Yeah.
Whether or not we have people on overtime, I don't know what sanitation plan is, you know, would look like for, for our Dora. I mean, we've got, that, what, what was recommended is a pretty long stretch with not a whole lot in between. Mainly just so, and, and I, I could see on occasion an advantage to going into the winery and getting a glass of wine and going over to the par and, and, you know, whatever. But I, at this point in time, I just don't know that there's an attraction that leaves itself.
For Ravenna, it would be more of an event, um, based thing. And not all the events would be a good fit for it, but some could be.
Right.
And I think if with the effort that Main Street is trying to, uh, the chamber obviously has been trying to work to bring businesses to fill some of these spots. What if we get more establishments that have food and official thing during, especially during events? And because we can implement it and suspend it.
And control it.
And control when the Dora happens or doesn't occur and be able to utilize it for specific events.
Yeah, the events, um, personally, the last thing I would want is it going consistently and opening it up for people to walk around. Yeah, and, you know, our residents who live downtown don't deserve that either. But I do agree that, I feel that if there's an event and it's tastefully done, it could be a draw. It could be an attraction, um, just like Christmas lights, you know, when we have midnight madness and stuff. You know, walking around, you know, looking at the shops, so things done in moderation like that, I think would be appropriate. But to just open it up, um.
That would create a.
It would create a problem. It would create a problem. My other question is, and I'm not sure how this works, for instance, Guido. If we were on a weekend and, or we had an event and people were at Guido's, would they be able to then maybe go have their pizza, eat outside on their property and drink alcohol? Or does it have, you know, how does that work? And some, you know, and have a beer, like they could go across the street to eighteen eighty-eight, purchase a beer, then go across to Guido's, sit out at the paddy, or does that have to be taken, like, the, the pizza taken across the street?
Blanket on the courthouse lawn.
If it's within the door.
As long as they allow it.
Yeah, as long as the store is okay.
That could be a part of it.
Right.
So Guido.
Establishment would decide whether they were going to allow Dora beverages in their establishment or not.
But, but here's the thing, you know, I don't know whether Guido wants, wants.
That's.
People walking in with somebody else's product. Maybe they don't, maybe they do, maybe they don't.
One time they wanted, at one point they had talked about alcohol licensing or something at one point, I remember where they want.
Going to expand.
Yes.
The benefit of the door, in my opinion, you know, assuming there is eventually a plan for the building, which is strong, two eighteen West Main Street, and it includes tables, and maybe a small amphitheater.
Right.
And every Friday night we have music playing and, you know, and a glass of wine or a grab of beer from Main Street and then sit outside and enjoy the music. That's what it's designed to do. And I am all for that when we get there. I think we, we, we sometimes put the cork before the horse when we initiate something unless we carefully craft it so it's only available when we authorize it. Although I think a door really should be something that's regular and only suspended like they do in Kent, um, when there's some other events or something. So I, I don't know, we, we, I, I guess it depends on how it's there yet. That's my only concern.
If we don't start talking about it now, again, like Clifford say, we'd be looking at something another year down the road. So I think we need something we need to look at.
On it, I think is important. I think we need to discuss it.
Keep it in your committee.
I could keep it in the committee and that way if an actual, it's time to do it a year from now or nine months from now, then we're all ready, we're prepared and we have more information. And I think unfortunately he can't believe, but I think it's to get us thinking about it and trying to get more information and we can ask any questions that we want. I'm sure Todd would be more than happy to.
I think we need to make sure we have a.
Have.
We have to get a commitment from those places that can provide the, the drinks. Well, they had a list of potential ones, but it didn't necessarily say for sure that.
There was some, but Main Street had said that they did a survey of the downtown businesses to see how they felt about the door.
That would serve the drinks, at least four.
I don't think any one of those.
I'm saying, do you have your homework before you start down the road creating a proposal? Because you never know. And, and they may not want, look, if I own a bar, do I want people to buy a drink and leave? Or do I want them to stay in my bar and drink? So I mean, there could be some people who say this is not necessarily a, so I don't, I, I can't. But we need to ask them because if we don't have four, we can't put in a proposal.
Well, we can certainly ask Main Street. Like I said, this is Main Street's proposal. They submitted it. And, and following the process of putting it up for discussion during committee. I'm not saying that we're voting on this today, tomorrow, or next month, or six months from now. I'm saying I think we all need to do our due diligence for Ravenna. And if you want to ask businesses if they're interested or not, according to Main Street, they did a survey of the downtown businesses and the majority of them were very interested in this happening, especially during events. But that's just what I've been told. Do you, if, if any of you want to talk to anybody, I would love to get the feedback and we can provide it back to Main Street and let them know where we see it. But I, this is a way to open up the discussion.
And I, and, you know, if you know anybody that lives in the downtown, ask their thoughts too.
I'm not sure all of them understand what the door is.
Well, that's my concern. That's why I said that we need to ask, the first place is to get the bars and places that have the proper license because if we don't have, then we need to do it. And I don't want to, we're going to be the ones responsible, not Main Street Ravenna. They want to promote this, and I understand that, but it's really council and the city that's going to have to administer this. So, you know, we, what, what I, what we, it's, for example, would like before we have, then we would include in a proposal. And it would be helpful to know what the other, and, and because who knows what Main Street told them. I don't know what was in the survey and we want to make sure that the businesses downtown, um, understand what it is and what the implications are.
I agree. It's not all the information that gets passed around about certain things. There's a lot of misinformation out there, so. I do it to that.
And the other thing that stuck in my mind that comment the mayor made was pertaining to some of these, drug and alcohol, uh, I'll refer to them as clients. And, I mean, I don't know the exact numbers that there are in the immediate area, but I do know some. And if it's, seems to, here's some things that are open-ended on the exact control. I mean, what I'm getting at is, I'll be a little bit more specific. Okay, it sounds like there's four or five establishments now that might say yes. What I'm getting at is to go right on down the line from, I'll just say west to east is an example. And, uh, there's no accountability there. And the only reason I'm saying that is some years ago that in a bar, a bartender can make a call if someone's had too much or not. And so that was just something that just came into my mind.
They certainly could do with the door as well.
Okay.
If I stumble, it wouldn't serve me.
Well, th- this is what I'm getting at. What type of, are there going to be actual restrictions or something pertaining to that? I know what you're saying, but.
I mean, I, I think it would still have to be established.
It would be up to the establishment.
It is currently, if you walk into a bar and you, you're sitting there and you're drinking and the bartender or the owner's just to say they're not going to serve you. It would still be up to the establishment to observe you in their professional capacity and determine that they're not going to serve somebody that they feel is that are in our downtown.
It would be enough to give them notices that, um, if they might have after hour, um, meetings, uh, notices ahead of time that this is going to be going on, they might choose to have that. Um, so Cheryl, do you want to just keep this in your committee at this time? And we'll keep it for discussion and kind of, uh, see where it goes?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, for the chip grant, NDS is asking for the mayor to sign the memorandum to extend the twenty nineteen chip to the July thirty-first, twenty twenty, the end of this year. There was a typo and they were aware of it. Um, this is twenty nineteen, but it should be the end of this year. Um, they have a few more units, um, that they need to get under contraptions that are needed for their private rehab. I need to double check that on the. Yes, they need four more, um, applications for private rehab. And that should get them done. Anything else, Mayor, on that one?
Um, that, that's a, a grant that is a partnership between the county.
Yes.
Streets, boroughs and the city. Uh, they had to schedule people that were going into remodel one at a time. They could not have two different groups in house.
In the unit at the same time.
To work. But we have people that have the need and, uh, this extension will allow us to help these folks and we will have to send money back.
That they're seeing across the state, um, with these programs because of the COVID, there's numerous ones.
And we, we are the, we, we take care of the financial matters of that particular grant.
Yes. It's time to get any. Moving forward.
Fine.
Okay. I think we have to take it quickly. I will help the economic development committee adjourn at six thirty-one P M.
All right, let's see if we can get caught up here. Sidewalks committee meeting to order. Uh, one item on the agenda this week, Dave, is the, allow the mayor to apply for AMAT's grant for South Prospect Street to the city, uh, limits. It's a little less than one mile. Uh, AMAT will cover eighty percent of this grants. It's a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant, city portion blue milling and two inches of new asphalt, sidewalk repairs to be ADA compliances, uh, pavement markings. And if the grant goes through, the project would, uh, be done, will start in May of twenty twenty-three. Opportunity for us to improve another street that needs some improvements.
Good job, Bob, on all your great work.
You, yeah, you're a per.
So your Southside residents are loving you right now.
Totally, it's speaking tickets.
Yeah, they've been, uh, they've been controlling pretty heavy on Mill and Diamond and I've seen several, several tickets being written.
It used to be thirty-five miles an hour.
Now the, the contract will come through when we do the castings, the CNX very castings that are in street.
That, I have a question on that. Some of them are.
Long.
Been, well, before we, I just had a couple of questions about that. Are there any other questions on this AMAT's grant? Let the mayor apply for it.
Move it forward.
We'll go ahead and move that forward. If I can, I just had a couple concerns about that. Not some of the, the whole coverage being.
They're going to get replaced.
So those will be replaced. Um, another concern was on the corner of Mill and Walton that it was, when you, I guess you, you were coming off of Wa- Walton on the Mill that it's a pretty significant drop off from where they've. Was it that way before?
Uh, well, that's my question. You know, most generally, they, they would put back what they take off.
Okay, that was brought to my attention. And then also have they graded and seeded all the?
No, they have not.
That's not complete.
No, they started that they have.
Okay.
So I think Diamond.
There's some, I believe, sections on Mill that probably still.
I haven't been down Mill in the last couple of days, but Diamond's, I think it's done.
Friday last, last Friday, they were not finished. They waited on Friday.
I know where they had, looked like they had filled in and seeded with some of those rains. It had, had washed some areas out, so, but I'm sure they'll seed those.
With our grant, our paving grants, it is to replace all the stop signs and speed limit signs, all of them. And if there's school zone signs, then those will get done, that sort of thing. Some of the sun, that's going to get put back on, speed limit sign. There's certain, there's, by law, there's nothing allowed to be posted to a stop sign. We did have to change it a couple of times. You can have a four-way stop, two-way stop, cross traffic doesn't stop. So we were making some corrections.
No further business, you have a management update?
The only thing I would say about this company that's doing this, they've, they've been pretty efficient in getting things taken care of. And, uh, we're, we're seeing, we've had some folks that take, we'd be going into next year with some of these projects. But the particular, this particular firm has done a good job of getting us taken care of, whether it's appropriate.
Six thirty-seven, I will adjourn the street sidewalks committee.
Okay, at six thirty-seven, we'll start the utility meeting, the first item on the agenda. That is a very simple piece of equipment is without that being rebuilt, that would.
Yeah, Bob, or you're passing up the next part, correct?
Yes.
So is this a, an appropriation? Is this already appropriated or is this just to purchase?
This is to have this rebuilt. There is money in the wastewater fund to have this done. And this is, it's an average lifespan is fifty thousand hours. It's approaching seventy. The reason we were that rebuilt is because it was still completely functional. There were no problems with this in the least. That's why they kept it going. And now it just started to, and this thing, it runs at approximately thirty thousand RPMs. So it's a very high-speed lower end for the aeration tanks.
What's the turnaround time, Paul, on, on getting this? How long does it usually take, you know?
Uh. Okay, once it's, once he gets to the, calls the company, it would be approximately, can get that started.
Do you guys have to move it forward?
Yeah. If, if there are no other questions pertaining to this.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah. Tracking sheets set up for forty thousand dollars. So we, so when we do the work, we need to specify the amount of money that.
Yeah, it's requested forty thousand, the exact amount that it will cost. The only reason that. The only reason that is being requested for, it's around this option of approximately thirty-seven thousand. Is because just in case, once you get pieces of parts that needs to be tackled at that time. There's a little bit of additional money if needed.
Then that's common for them to do that, so.
Yes. Okay, since there are no other questions or comments pertaining, okay, that's great. So this can be taken care of and he can, he can start the process of this.
After, this is just.
The next thing on the agenda would be the. Okay, Mr. Finney, but I have the details on this. I don't want to have any information increasing on this. Okay. And first of all, there's one item that doesn't belong in this committee. It belongs in the planning committee, that page fifty-eight store.
How about fit in?
I know, I'm just. This is a recent update map. And. The, uh, the red is what we're currently working on. He'll precedents represent hydrants with a flow of between one and fifteen. So our water line that we've, um. Most likely will be funded for, which would be twenty-two to construction. And then also Page. And as you see, Page has three hydrants that, in essence, have been tagged out of service. The section of Scranton Street, North Scranton Street, is because there's multiple red breaks throughout the city. But the, the red ones are two thousand eighteen to twenty. The green ones are fourteen to eighteen. And then, uh, you can see the older breaks, those go back down. So when we look at replacing water lines, we're looking at hydrants, we're looking at breaks. Most generally, if it's a hydrant issue, then it's a water diameter. The, the pipe size is too small, it's probably a four-inch pipe. We have these maps with pipe diameters, but this one doesn't show. But that is, um, it's a little deceiving. It looks like we're replacing all of the Meridian Street water line, and we're not. We're actually connecting over to, the majority of the services are on a four-inch line, even though we have a red away. So we're gonna abandon the four-inch tile water services in the hydrant over to the main line. We're not sure why it wasn't connected over years ago, but it wasn't. And then the Sycamore and Harris portion, we'll go with that. And then over on Murray, the, these Woodland and a couple of group items. Then in the future, the yellow lines that represent water lines that are undersized or have hydrants that are issues. There are a few hydrants that we may be able to just fix, just maybe a bad hydrant. We have to, as you see, there's a lot of hydrants for us to really explore.
So I'm, I'm looking at Lafayette, it has the yellow line that it does have a hydrant. Does that mean it's like the water line up a hydrant? Or I'm not sure I understand the difference between the.
Yeah, that one in particular is one of them we think we can tie over to Maple Street. It's, it's on.
So it may not be that hydrant, it might be the water line, is that?
Well, in this, in this case, I think it's, the hydrant is tied onto a small water line.
Right.
Ten inch. So a short distance, we can tie into a big water line, a, a larger diameter water line and get enough service that that would no longer be red.
Only, I'm asking, I got a call from a neighbor.
There's a leak at that intersection.
Okay.
That street department was gonna look into.
That hydrant may be operational.
Yeah, that could, that could be the easy one.
Yeah.
That's, that's the things we're gonna start looking for. And, and the hydrant at the end of this, you're not gonna get the flow out of a four-inch pipe. Again, it's, so the, uh. The next item on the agenda, increase water line survey amount, that's twenty thousand dollars a year. For whatever reason, last year, it, um. It didn't get carried over. So this year's budget. Used up, paid for the Meridian Sycamore for our line service. This application will be applied for in the spring of twenty twenty-two for construction twenty twenty-three. Because we design these projects a year in advance, we, so we've been cycling this way for several years. So I need more money.
Bob, the map is very impressive. It says two thousand eighteen to twenty, the large red X's, they're all over the place. And how do you prioritize then, these projects that you've done? Do they, is it the number of breaks, the severity? I do live on Murray, so I'm familiar with what's happened on Murray. But how do we prioritize those?
The street department work, the, the street department breaks, they are. And if it's cast iron that rusts out or, um, if it's just a bad joint, that the rest of the pipe is not bad, that sort of thing. So we kind of look, we'll look at that from a priority standpoint with the breaks or that causing these breaks. So it's, that's kind of priority.
Sure.
The diameter, what it's serving. Hydrants have been a big focus.
I know. The one on Highland, uh, we have a hydrant. Thanks, Bob.
The hydrant wouldn't put out enough water for what the fire department's demand is. So they tag them out of service. So that's where they're gonna put out enough water. But we just kind of put it on our hit list as a fifteen. All right. So the next item, water tank project, as you know, the GE stamp pipe is, has been not utilized since two thousand fourteen. So we, we have storage for half a million gallons. Fire protection standpoint, we should, we should have a hundred percent of what we treat every day. Our water quality, as we've been seeing, so. My, I've been applying for grants, I'm applying for one today that water tank, or building new water tanks in the city. So then we would have two elevated storage tanks.
Didn't we vote on something about the?
Well, it has been recent.
I remember some too, but I'm. They painted it.
That was the city park, painted the inside of it.
We did GE sometime, so that would have been the city park. So this is a different project, and we're not a hundred percent sure where it would reside. Uh, so working on, through the Ohio Department of Development, through the governor's office, which is the water wastewater infrastructure funding. The state came up with two hundred and fifty million dollars, and they're gonna spread out allegedly throughout the state. So. Mayor, Secretary, Finance Director, and I have discussed a commitment from council for our ARPA funds. And then also through our, uh, water capital improvement funds. When I apply for these grants, they're asking for commitments for. Match fund, there you go. Be it a resolution or an ordinance committing five hundred thousand dollars of our ARPA funds to this project, along with three hundred thousand dollars of our water CI funds to this project.
This project is for the GE tank?
It's for a tank, not a hundred percent.
Can't get to my own stuff, I'm not connecting to the internet, but I thought the last time you talked about the GE tank was to retire it for some reason.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. We talked about it, but we didn't go through a resolu, we didn't ask for resolutions.
Need to resurrect it or to build a different?
If we can get funding, we'll build a new tank.
Let me ask you this, what size of a tank would this new one be?
We're leaning toward three quarters of a million gallon, point seven five.
Yes.
Million gallons, yeah.
Okay.
I spoke with the NDS, there's also a grant that we could apply for through NDS, which is called a residential public infrastructure grant. It's still through the Ohio Department of Development, it's just a different protocol. We'll just be pushed into another grant and then resubmit it. We, we've been, it appears we're gonna be successful with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan through a PWC for this water district, a PWC district for their approval. Typically, at this point, we'll be funded for that. Just like we will be funded for our Page Street water line, along with. So as I'm, I'm asking for two resolutions to earmark funds for the ARPA funds and then also water CI.
ARPA funds allocation, not just the amount that we're getting, mostly, right?
I think you're wrong.
Yeah. It would be.
Okay, so that.
And that would total that out, uh, for this year.
Correct. Now, this would be construction for twenty twenty-three. Because as my plan, it'll be construction of the next one, twenty twenty-two, summer of twenty twenty-two. A project this large doesn't get done at a time.
I think the, the project that's mine with the ARPA.
The, this grant needs to be signed within twelve months if we, if we receive it. Scoring criteria is based on shovel rate project that can be completed as soon as possible. It's kind of their way of stimulating the economy by shoving money into the construction end of things as fast as possible.
And how much money did you ask for from the governor's?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the ARPA funds that the city received, five hundred thousand, I'm asking for a million dollars from the governor.
Oh, okay.
There is a match component to it.
To move forward with.
Resolution.
The resolution.
Earmarking our, the city's ARPA funds, a half million dollars to this project. And then also three hundred thousand dollars of the water CI fund to this project. With the understanding, construction with.
This is funded, do you have a potential site for the new tower?
No, we actually talked about city park, putting second tower at the city park, but just nothing said in stone, other than that's why we would put it.
Of the, the new tower, it'd be before we start looking at maintenance costs.
Well, and the, the, the type of tank we would build would be a concrete pedestal, with most likely a steel wall. So the painting costs would just be the steel in the future. Typically, they're twenty-five, thirty years. And I did mention something to Judy about it, and we'll work something out if we get to the right one.
The town store.
She doesn't like her office, but. Yeah, we could be dealing about that. The water plant, but I don't believe that's gonna be the right location.
What about havers in that area?
The, the issue, even at the GE tank, not only is it a bad design, it's, it's almost too far away from the, the residential closure. The water is getting used up, so it's not sitting in the pipe going bad.
Well, I mean, if you had one at city park, why wouldn't you have one at the other end of town?
Well, hydraulically, that makes the most sense. The problem with our water is it's sitting in the pipe a little too long. So it loses its chlorine and all these other fancy things that are. Years ago, we used to just check the water at one location, if it was good, now we have to check one. That's what necessitated the change in two thousand fourteen. For us to stay compliant, we had to stop using that tank, or we would waste a tremendous amount of water that we were treating by flushing and pooling. Yeah, some, for that, I know, understand that's a, quite a necessity to go ahead and with that project. And it's a project that would typically be designed and let it sit on a shelf if we can't fund it. If we know there's money to fund the project, then we'll move forward with it. And that's, that's kind of where we are with the COVID money. So we really, we need to move forward with it, it's something that really should have been done a few years ago. You don't have the money, can't move forward. It's looking a little better.
Yeah, so it's quite a, if there's anything for a management update at this time. Okay, thank you. At this particular time, I will adjourn the utility committee meeting.
We'll call for the planning committee meeting. We have several items on the agenda, some of them. Some of them are ongoing and I'll just give a brief update about the design review commission. I did attend the meeting, so we did Cheryl and Christine as well on Thursday. So the changes that were coming under consideration were pushed forward by the design review commission, I think in January or February. Uh, the first thing I did was kind of tighten up the wording. I think they had some language endorsed or, you know, those changes that I made. So the changes that the design review commission itself proposed are ready to go. Um, of course, my intention is to keep this on second and third reading to get a full discussion about any changes. In addition, um, they will give an opportunity to review the changes. They're going to look into it. My suggestion to them was to provide some input. I think it's fair that since the code involves their particular commission, that they have the opportunity to see what changes Larry's proposing and weigh in on those. During the meeting, because that are the second item on the agenda. The, um, the role of the design review commission, since we, the council approved the acquisition and demolition of the property at two eighteen West Main Street. And during the meeting, he actually sent me an email and he can confirm whether I got it right. But if I made it to the building department to demolish that building, the design review commission would review it. Um, now obviously I think the other part of your opinion was that ultimately the council would have uh, a right or the ultimate authority to vote to go through it and if the design review commission turned it down.
That's correct. I just indicated to you that, you know, from reading of the jurisdiction, whatever, if you're applying for demolition. I mean, at the point we were doing this, the council did in fact rule on it or vote on it. And what I indicated in my letter was that the council has the ability to kind of not necessarily modify, but overlook the specific requirement, requirement to move forward with it. I think in my letter, I also indicated to you that, um, should this now come up for the redesign of that area, again, I think the design review would be involved and evaluated.
So just, you know.
Just to, to kind of reiterate some of the actions that have gone on. The current owner of the property that wants to make changes on the property applies to the design. That property is not looking to make the changes. The new owner does not own it yet. So therefore they're not applying to design review to look at anything yet because they don't own it yet. So I think as far as reporting the court and, and go through that commission. And ultimately it is city council's approval.
Yeah, my only concern was the vote that took place at a regular meeting. Um, whether that invalidated any review by the design review commission and.
No, and NDS has full intentions on applying to.
We have the votes. If they do turn it down, then I think it would pass anyways.
Okay, that's fine. But I just wanted some clarification. I appreciate Mr. Simeon weighing in on that. Okay, so, um, and these were just the item we carry, carrying over from utilities for that needs any action or not. We'll get to that after this one. But I don't know what this one is. It says reallocation of the park levy capital improvement funds. Um, you know, this is.
Has its own levies. Um, one is for capital improvements, one is for operations. When they divided it up, uh, they have an abundance of money in capital improvement. And they have very little money to increase. She's asking for a reapportionment of the capital, uh, fund. Now, we had a discussion, uh, on this a while ago when Kimball was here. And our concern at that point in time is that it has to go to the ballot. That if removed the first ones, then you can submit the other for a vote. So if they, they could, they could have voted not funded at all and then when you request the money again, turn it down. Judy, uh, said that she had a conference so that you did not jeopardize losing the funds. Uh, and I can, I do not have the expertise on that to, to, to make a value judgment on that. That, that to me is Mr. Simeon's.
To worry about putting it back on the ballot? Is that what you're suggesting?
I guess in honesty, I don't. I, I wasn't aware of this being on the agenda this evening.
Judy sent it up.
I mean, I'd be happy to take a look at it again. I know we had talked about this back when Kimball was on board. And, you know, honestly, I'm not recalling it specifically, so I'd be happy to take a look at it again.
I think that's all she's asking for is to take a look at it to see if it's possible.
On this agenda, I would take a look at it.
Okay, thanks.
So last time.
I'm sorry, the, the, the tracking sheet from Judy doesn't say what percentages she would like to change. About that.
We'll, we'll find that.
Yeah, we need to figure out whether she can do it that way.
Yeah, right.
The percentages after that.
Capital fund, you know, something like that every year. So it'd be some portion of that. But she hasn't really commented on the amount.
How much does she get in, uh, in the operating?
Parks levy is four hundred and twenty-ish thousand or something. That was based on last year. So in the capital one getting a little over two hundred thousand. So she'd take, she wants to take some of that two hundred thousand and move it into the regular.
The, the, the parks, the trails, but they forget that just one person alone um, can't, you know, do the, that, that type of work to keep it up to where it needs to go and, um.
That's a different request.
I know, but, but I'm saying someone, some of that, you know, equipment and, you know, uh, stuff for the parks. But then it, it's almost like a double edge where you're looking at to take care of the stuff that people would like to see.
The maintenance stuff.
The maintenance, right.
Really can't come out of the capital part.
Right.
You, you lose that flexibility and the capital will be within that ARPA fund, but the way our levy is set up doesn't sound like right now we can do that.
Right.
Okay. So then the last item is something moved over from utilities, which is codified ordinance. Chapter eight concerns about, you want to talk about this?
Well. Julie pointed this over himself. If you look at the date, it might be a little bit different now than it was then. Um, basically this says that the mayor is allowed to give somebody a license to, um, sell stuff. And unless it is, um, unless it's. No transient trader person who opens stores and places for sale, where there's residential exercises or within sea. Without first obtaining a license, section does not apply to a person selling by sea or exposed. Agricultural articles or products can be quite a bit from corn, ears of corn to cattle. Sort of thing.
I mean, those barbecue shops that show up in various parking lots?
They're, they're manufacturing food at that point, but just simple. Last few years, we chased a guy that was selling rugs away. He was on a vacant parcel that he didn't own. We chased away people trying to sell cell phones and fidget spinners and Cleveland Indians and stuff. Is this changed legislature permitting some of these local salespeople? Kind of like, maybe feel like we do a garage sale permits. You're allowed three a year for three days at a time. Granted, that's at their own property. This wouldn't be, but where, you know, in law, he gets permission from the local store owner. The store has a bathroom and a sink from a food stand one that people that would buy food, you know, sort of thing. And I've seen some, I've seen another food truck parked behind another local establishment, this sort of thing. So is, is this something that council would like to reconsider, maybe rewrite? You know, the certain things don't require somebody selling corn on a car out of the back of their truck at the gas station. Because it is, so that's how it's listed.
What, what, temporary? What does that mean?
Exactly. Well, I think that's something that.
For two days and then leave for three days and then come back and I was temporary.
Or you could set up all summer and then leave in the fall. That's temporary. So I think maybe we should define, yeah, we need to have some defined dates on.
Top shelf pieces. It's, it's specific. You can have three garage sales. This is it. Boom.
Either that or it's left up to the mayor's discretion. And that's something we've tried to make those decisions.
Well, so we're not impolite enough to make those decisions. I mean.
You can't throw ordinance. So we write it in the ordinance then when the mayor issues permit, just like we do garage sale. Garage sale is specific, three days, three times a year.
So maybe just.
We're now using the event, uh, form. I'm not a hundred percent comfortable because we don't always know. They don't always tell you exactly from just setting up anywhere, uh, with that. And I think that, that one part about agriculture, it just, it goes back to favoritism to agriculture. You're not saying that it shouldn't be, but they're, they're selling, uh, stuff and we have people doing that up front across from the, uh, church. You know, the church and, uh, there's a business.
Lead up.
Yeah.
Have you issued any of these licenses in the past?
Uh, I wouldn't call them licenses. The form we have is an event thing.
Okay.
That I give, give permission on.
Okay.
Uh, we do the same thing. You've got the walk around.
I've been so busy, I haven't even paid attention to the PR stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, but anything that they're doing in town, that a lot of them are rather, it doesn't fit well to the form. Uh, because that's, the form was designed for parade. Uh, it's going on in the courthouse a lot.
So anything like food related that would pop up, is that being administered then by the health department?
They have, yes, they're the ones that check on it.
So the way it stands now, the health department oversees like the, the state. Right, but the city would control where they can be put in place. And right now it's not really defined in that, that they could start, you know, we could start having different businesses, like mobile businesses pop up in, in the area. Is without, you're looking at more of a.
Well, and, and again, the difference manufacturing food to selling food out of the back of your pickup truck is the health department wouldn't get involved if you were selling a truck full of corn or flowers or rugs. The ordinance temporary store kind of goes a little bit for the.
Well, the other thing we're seeing a lot of in town, uh, is the grill, grilling.
BBQ.
BBQ. It's starting to show us where they're frequently.
I pay attention.
And they have health department.
They seem, the health department seems to do a pretty good job.
Yeah.
With the, the temporary food licenses. And to your point from a zoning standpoint, I don't believe it's written in the code that it's permitted. Going back to this ordinance from nineteen seventy-two, the little street vendors with the street cart to run down the street sell out of a cart. Um, but we are allowing, yeah, getting the food trucks. Is this a direction that city council wants to go? Do they want to look into further? Um, and maybe, I don't know, if there are some ideas, some ordinances that what could, how hot dogs is I am, the people who want to buy it is hot dogs. And obviously the library seems successful because they keep bringing the people back.
I'm sure some of the hot dog guy.
When we have events like the one, it's the health department that regulates that.
But it necessarily wouldn't even have to be food. I mean, if I want to sell candles, walk.
Correct.
Right?
I mean, I could.
You wanted to. I'd have to get a permit to be able to do that and.
Right. You know, from, from an engineering stand, from an engineering standpoint, I'm more concerned with eating grass and eating grass in and out of parking lots. So I, it, it almost seems there is a certain location that these things would fit. And they would obviously have to have permission to be on any parking lot that they don't own.
Correct.
Lots that are more conducive to certain types of activities.
Right, West Main Street, there's the old gas station.
Well, they, they don't own that.
No.
But maybe in front of the lighthouse pool or something like that.
Yeah.
Well, what about if it's an abandoned, you know, good sense or whatever, they have permission.
Well, then this should say they have to have written.
Well, so, yeah, so your suggestion is this is, needs some enhancement, some updating, some, you know, modernizing.
Correct. To, to the way our society is living today.
Yeah, well, maybe we could, we can bring this back and we have something more defined, um, to, to look into. But maybe the exception for agriculture, maybe that's outdated. It does say that the, the fee is no more than a hundred dollars, so it could be as little as ten cents. Do we want to have a fixed amount? Do we want to still leave it?
Right.
All right, well, um, I'll make an attempt to look into what other cities have done and maybe a chair else you could send something out to your clerk's, um, list service and see if they have anything. All right, um, that being the end of the. All right, um, that being the end of the agenda, there's their management. At seven twenty, I will adjourn the planning committee.
Okay, seven twenty, the personnel committee will begin their meeting. You've received, uh, in your email, recently salary adjustments. Uh, there were a number of them, I think about six or seven. Uh, there are reasons behind uh each of the uh things that are on the list. And we wanted to talk about those tonight.
Can I um make a motion at this session to talk about um some of these salary positions?
I make a motion if you want to execute your discussion, discussion.
And we also do have, you know, administrative issue or employment issue as well. So it's all would tie into personnel as well.
So discuss personnel and pending lawsuit.
Yep.
Okay, there you go.
Do I make a motion?
I I already kind of.
Do I do a safety discussion regarding personnel litigation? All in favor?
All right.
Yeah, I forgot. I'm sorry.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Mosskin?
Yes.
Mr. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.